All right, now that it's six o'clock, I'd like to call to order the Town of Anne Buren zoning and planning board meeting for January 14, 2025. Can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rash?
Here.
Mr. Virginia?
Here.
Mr. Bose?
Here.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Mr. Sykes?
Here.
Mr. Schatzfeld?
Here.
Ms. McMahon?
Here.
So, December 10, 2024 minutes, I believe they were submitted, emailed online, but there were hard copies in the packets. Has there, is there any comments to the December meeting minutes? Hearing no comments, Chair entertain a motion to approve the December 10, 2024 meeting minutes.
Move.
Hearing first and second, any comments? Hearing no comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Approved.
Yeah.
First item on the agenda, Michael Allen, 7653-7663, East Sorrel Hill Road, tax map ID number 032 dot dash 04 dash 01, and 032 dot dash 04 dash 01. Chair entertain a motion to exit general here, general meeting to enter into a public hearing.
Move.
Sorry.
Hearing first and second, any comments? Hearing no comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? We are now in public hearing.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Mike Allen, I live at 7653 East Sorrel Hill. You have before you a site map. This is my property. Originally, I purchased a 10-acre plot. Within that 10 acres was subdivided one acre that I put on the market. I had a gentleman who maybe offered to buy half the property. So what I did is I worked with someone to survey the property and to set a lineup. Last time we were here, you guys had talked about the driveway that's existing and one that's not used. There used to actually be a house on this property, there isn't anymore. So what I did was I went, I went back to the surveyor and we had an here drive to be removed. I also spoke to the individuals purchasing that land. We are going to together incur the costs, split it up basically by the size of the driveway and have that driveway removed. So I hope that satisfies the issues that you had with last time.
Excuse me, Mr. Allen?
Yes.
We have a clerk here taking notes. Could you just use the microphone, please?
I, I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so being that we're in public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that want to speak for or against this application? I ask again, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this application? Hearing no comments, Chair entertain a motion to exit the public hearing and enter back into general session.
Move.
Sorry.
Hearing first and second, any comments? Hearing no comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? We're now back in general session. Can you still please give your name and address again?
Yes, Michael Allen, 7653, East Sorrel Hill.
Okay, so you've obviously went through and did what we asked out of the last meeting. And so the person that's buying that property, it's going to be a non-residential lot, how is that lot going to be accessed in the future?
Well, sure. My understanding based on what we've spoken about is there's actually, there's a road here, an access road. Right now, the, I've given permission to the snowmobiles.
Could you just grab the mic?
Yeah. Thank you for getting me.
Thanks.
So it's not on here, but there's an access right here. This is, this is an old farm field with an access road. So that portion, he can access it there to do what he, to do what he wants. And my understanding is that, you know, down the road, he'll try to put a driveway in there. That's a much safer place than where this driveway is now. This is a sharp turn right here. Right here, you have very good view of the road, both north and south. So my understanding is that he will be accessing his property from that road.
Okay.
Well, lot two is a non-residential. It's not a building lot.
That's correct, he's going to have to.
He cannot get a, he cannot build anything there. He would have to get a building permit and then it would be subject to.
Subject design.
And he'd have to get a driveway permit.
Of course, yeah.
Anybody have any further comments on this? I'm going to quickly, before we make a decision on this, we're going to do seeker. The Board does declare itself a lead agency, proceeding on an uncoordinated review. This matter is an unlisted action. And after reviewing the short environmental assessment form, does hereby render a negative declaration, finding there are no adverse environmental impacts to be realized. End of motion.
Move.
Sorry.
Hearing first and second, any comments? Hearing no comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Approved. Chair entertain a motion to approve the subdivision, the Michael Allen subdivision at 7653 and 7663, East Sorrel Hill Road, tax map ID number 032 dot dash 04 dash 01, and 032 dot dash 04 dash 01, as shown on the subdivision plan that is stamped and signed by licensed surveyor dated 10/16/24 with revisions on 12/11/24. End of motion.
So move.
Second.
Hearing first and second, any comments?
Yes. Being that it's a new year, it's one, and we've got a lot of new people, how are we going to record non-residential fees that need to be collected if he comes down later on for park fees for this, for this lot? Because we have some minor subdivision and it will require a park fee.
I thought it was more than one.
More than one subdivision. So if it's three plus lots, then I believe there's park fees attached to that. I'm looking that up now, then I think I could find it earlier, so. We're, we're also two, are we two lots here? Two rats, two lots. Two lots prior or two lots after.
More of a lot line adjustment, really.
As Jim stated, this is, it is more than just a lot line adjustment because it is two to two. Do you know if we collect, collected fees on the first lot?
No reference to that.
And I think that that's what, that's what I want to just pay attention to going forward in the new year.
I think what I would do, because it's not quickly being found on this, I would just make the subdivision approval conditioned upon the payment of any park fees as necessary. Just leave it at that, we can figure it out once it comes, when they come in to make any application, they could be paid. Or we can call them. Just make that a condition.
If the initial motions have any concerns with that?
Aye.
So hearing that comment and adding that comment as a condition, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Approved. Thank you very much. Please check in with the codes office, they will give you the information of about how many copies we're going to need and the mile or copy for signature.
Okay.
Doug, Doug should know that all too, so.
So our town engineer just confirmed the schedule of fees is three or less is no fee.
Okay.
None.
Three or less is a minor subdivision.
Is a minor subdivision. It's 250.
150.
150?
Oh, I'm sorry.
In 2025 is 150.
I thought he just said that.
And it's three copies, so I need any site surveys, one mile or two feet.
Sorry, I didn't hear what Jason said.
But being that this is a lot line adjustment, is it still considered?
No, this isn't a lot line adjustment, this is a subdivision.
If you're going into subdivision, okay.
We're creating two lots.
But there is two lots already.
We, true.
True.
We will, leave it, leave it to the codes office.
Codes office will make a determination on that, check in at the codes office. I just deflected.
What section do you find that in?
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All engineers.
200, what section is code? It's on the, it's on the, it's on the code.
All right.
We don't, we don't have a lot line adjustment process. We have minor subdivision.
Okay.
Go to minor.
Okay.
All right.
Done. All right, next item on the agenda, Centerline Communications, T-Mobile, 2116 Warner's Road, tax map ID number 047 dot dash 03 dash 55 point 0. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak for this applicant? I'm afraid that was the case. For the Board's knowledge, this is very similar to the previous month's applicant. There's modifications to a cell tower with some ground mounted work that's on an existing pad. So very, very similar. I have not been in touch with this applicant. Tom and Tim, have you had any conversation? Tim, have you had conversations with this applicant?
No, sir. She was asking why this center, for the center line, for the cell tower. She was asking why it was going through, like Chris Mundy would tell him about the email that she, why, why had to go through zoning and planning? They were questioning about going through the planning board's review and co-location shouldn't, and they made her a copy of what's, what's on the books. Didn't hear any more after that, that was yesterday afternoon.
So we're going to hold this agenda item?
Yeah, she didn't indicate anybody would be here either.
And they named?
We motion to table.
I would table it. I mean, they knocked themselves out on the application. The attention name CEO, town of JDX.
Yeah.
Town address, city and state with 12345 as a zip, they, they really.
They really knocked this one out?
They did, they, they went all out.
Yeah, a little form letter problem there. All right, Chair entertain a motion to table the Centerline Communications, T-Mobile, 2116 Warner's Road, tax map ID 047 dot dash 03 dash 55 point 0.
Move.
Second.
Hearing first and second, any comments? Hearing no comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Held. All right, next on the agenda, Loose Car Care LLC Enterprises LLC, 7361 State Fair Boulevard, tax map ID number 064 dot dash 01 dash 33 point 2. This is for a site man modification.
Nope, I'll take it.
Can you give your name and address, please?
Home address for business.
Was that?
Home address.
Home address, please.
Blue Canada, home address, 6002 Newport Road, New York.
Can you give us a brief summary of what you're looking to do?
Three years ago, I added, built 300 square foot whole barn structure that encompasses a couple bays and a couple lawns. And then I might forget add three more bays, 3,000 square feet, that's city attached.
So same function?
Exact function, yes. There's going to be no, this, this side, you don't have no drains, it's just going to be concrete slab with lifts, two lifts.
Okay, so you won't be doing any car washing and that in those bays?
The only drains I have in our facility are, I just have two drains here in our wash base. My main building has no drains either.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the Board? So moving forward, we're going to have to, you know, we'll be, we'll be have to set up a public hearing similar to the last meeting to be scheduled for next meeting. But I'd like to get through some questions or comments that the Board might have as part of this, so if there's anything that needs to be addressed ahead of that, that we can have that care of.
So the overall disturbance just looks like over a little over 3,000 square feet then, huh? Most of it's already gravel, so it's impervious or won't, won't trigger any sweat or any rain, right? Yeah.
I don't remember the addition, I don't know why, I don't remember it. I remember all the property line changes that you did.
I remember you.
Yeah. It's good or bad?
It's never good when they remember, it's never good when they remember.
The full building that's out back there, it's got drains now, right? Has it got something?
It's, well, it's got, we got tanks that are in there.
Holding tanks?
Yep.
All right.
Is it, what, what are you doing, washing vehicles in there? Is there oil water separator? Where's, where does that all go?
That all goes into a tank that can get pumped out.
So you pump it out?
We don't do a lot of, it's just, it's there, we don't do a lot of detailing, it's not like a, you know, like a.
Constant car wash.
You know, it's, you know, we wash the car here and there. Our primary structure in there is, we have two, we have two lifts that are there, then we do some programming, programming in that building.
So the washing isn't like, isn't the main function?
No, it's a, it's a subsidiary, I wash my cars, we'll wash loaner vehicles. We do offer detailed service, but it's not a big, very small percentage of the business.
And the addition that you're planning to put on, you said it, but I missed it, so what are you going to be doing in those two bays?
We're in, we're in three bays.
Three bays.
There'll be two lifts, two lifts will be at the far, far left of the building, then this, we plan just to leave this a flat bay at the start. Work on trucks and different things, gives us a little bit more space, I'll have some heavier duty capacity lifts just for safety. We do work a lot of fleet vehicles, so sometimes they can come in loaded, like, you know, F-350 that could have welders of that nature on there. We can lift things, they have a drive on, you know, heavier, just heavier lifts, and we can lift things safely and expand what we can do.
Knowing that, go ahead, if you still. I was just going to say that, you know, knowing that you're going to be removing some parking spaces, I mean, it looks like you have a parking out here for all the, I mean, that meets all the needs for parking for all these buildings, based on town code?
I think we have, we have quite a bit.
I agree.
We went through it, yeah.
I'm just making sure that we're, we're good. If we remove whatever, blind spots that.
This is PUD.
So in the front of the building, Lulu's telling me, explained to me was for customer based, and a lot of the other parking spots are basically holding spots for cars in construction. So he's got 22 spots, he has one handicap spot he's within code.
I used to sell cars, he's made inventory, 30 cars, so he's got a lot of cars right now, he doesn't have any more, so these are still listed here, we don't pay that much for sales.
So you're not doing any more cars, though?
Here, I've got a car here and there, but not, not what I used to.
But just to be clear, that back building is still entirely for your business use, you're not planning on renting it to another entity? And the reason I, I say that is because then you get into, if there's two separate businesses and making sure that whether there's signage or bathroom facilities or all the things that would go with two different uses, and that may be something that the Board wants to make as a condition, that it's all under one business purpose. It's all the same business use.
Yep, I have no intention of selling the business, but don't know 25, 30 years down the road, if I did, you know, it's, it's not in, not in my, not in my current account.
Understood.
What are you going to do for lighting?
Lighting?
Exterior lighting.
Yep, there, there'll be lighting on the building, similar to what I have here. My, this one here is all well lit. If you're going to own that our property today, you see it's very well lit, the lighting that we'll put on this building would be very sufficient. I mean, it's important to me because I have multiple cameras, I want to be able to see, you know, not that we never have any issues there, but it would be lighting on the building which would, which would do really good job, so which we want to have on, on this building.
Would it be down lighting?
Yep. Exactly what we have.
We're talking about wall packs, probably?
Yes.
Okay.
That proposed asphalt that you got there, it looks like it's about 20 feet deep from the building.
I think that'd be the first part you said.
The asphalt that you've got in front of the building, the new asphalt, looks like it's about 20 feet.
Yeah, that'll just be to make to, because we'll have to actually, it'll be a little bit of an incline, so we'll have to just make our current parking lot to that building, and that's what that is for.
Is that going to give you enough room to be able to pull cars in and out of there, okay, without pinching on that last space of the 11 existing spaces you got there?
So a problem, oh yeah, if, if you're going to look at the space where you're now, we can, we drive right in, the whole design is drive right in, and then you just, there's so much room there, it would be a issue getting in.
Any other questions or comments at this time from the Board members? All right, Chair entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for Loose Car Care LLC Enterprises LLC, 7361 State Fair Boulevard, tax map ID number 064 dot dash 01 dash 33 point 2. End of motion. All right, schedule a public hearing for?
February 11.
February 11, 2025. End of motion.
Move.
Hearing first and second, any comments? Hearing no comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Scheduled, so we'll see you.
This, this will require referral to 48.
Right.
Yes.
Chair, Chair entertain a motion to, do we have to do a motion for this?
No, no.
So this will have to, this is, so basically referral to the 239, to, we have to send it to the county planning for their approval.
What does that mean?
You got the, you got the planning board meeting on there?
We're actually, if we get in by January 24th, so we put the meeting on February 10.
All right, so we'll, we'll get this sent in tomorrow, if not, so we should have comments back, if they have any comments at all. So we'll be able to have the public hearing for next month, then we'll go over there.
Appreciate it. Anything you need from me prior to, between that time, or just wait till I.
No, I think we're all set, the biggest thing was if there was any comments that we needed addressed, we could be, the opportunity to get it addressed, so we, we're ahead of the game.
I appreciate it.
Yep, have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, Apex Motor Small Engine Repairer, 7905 Kriegel Road, tax map ID number 034 dot dash 03 dash 07 point 1. This is a change of use.
Thank you.
Can you give your name and address once you finish hanging that up, I apologize. You're welcome.
Name's Casey Stock, address 1720 Rabbit Lane, Phoenix.
All right, thank you, Casey. Can you give a summary of what you're looking to do?
Yeah, and you said a change of use, was formerly an inside sales retail store, looking to do small engine repair, sales and service for outdoor power equipment. So I'll need a change of use for the repair side as well as outdoor sales for small.
Based on our pre-meeting, did you make any adjustments to this plan that you sent in?
Yeah, basically the only real adjustment is we talked about the signage and the driveway issue.
Can I get, do you have a copy?
I resubmitted this one, so you should.
Okay. Jim and I wouldn't have got it, yes. Everybody else gets a packet after this, I guess.
You're good.
Oh, well, I may already have it, I don't know.
You should have it. Yeah, you have it.
I thought.
We just didn't get the revised copy. All right, so you're looking to have an equipment display outside, what, can you, for the Board's purpose, can you explain what you're looking to display?
Yeah, it'll just be all brand new equipment, obviously, that's over the area here around the mast, all March of X is there, just outside of the driveway. I use, I marked that whole area, but it's not going to be like van packed full of equipment, I just want to keep that area allotted because there are different types of equipment. So really, all I want upfront are to demonstrate the different types of equipment you could have, AKA like a zero turn mower versus a tractor, and it's all loaded, so handful of units there, everything else inside.
Tim and Tom, what, is there anything on our code that, and I should have been ahead of this, and I apologize, but is there anything in the code that would not allow outdoor?
For garden, for gardening equipment, no, it's in the code for outdoor sales. So it's, he's looking at a mixed use between D4, right, D4, D6?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in code.
So then you have this area reserved for temporary equipment of storage, what are you kind of looking at that as?
Yeah, just more or less for drop off and pick up, somebody's going to come pick up their repaired equipment, I could set out basically behind the building, it's not really shown as well as I'd like it to, but there is a pretty good, between this tree line and the back of the building, a pretty good hidden spot where you can see anything from the road.
So it's going to be on like a grass area?
Yes.
The display area out front, I'm assuming you're going to bring it in at night?
Yeah, that's the plan.
Regular questions, any change in lighting?
No, actually, I haven't, I haven't looked at that again, and there's plenty of outdoor lighting already on the building, and since the equipment is coming in at night, I have no need to have that lit, most of my hours would be daily hours.
Yeah, what would your hours of operation be, do you think?
Most likely 8 to 5.
Only modification to the outside of the building is a minor change to the size of that overhead door, is that correct?
Correct, yes, which I'll need to confirm for, obviously, but.
We talked about signage, so you were.
You removed it?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, took it off, because it was going to put it in the middle of the parking lot via code, so.
Yeah, okay.
It's having to work.
Yep, okay. So if you did, if you did want to come back for signage, whether it's on the building or off, you'd have to come back and, you know, especially make sure that it meets code and stuff like that.
I know we've been requiring sidewalks up through there, what's the status of that?
That was next. So we briefly talked about when we met that, you know, we, it would change the use of property we've required as part of our comprehensive plan that, you know, we've been up and down downer, and through this area, we've been requiring sidewalks. You know, you're leasing the building?
Correct.
Have you talked to the property owner about what we talked about?
Unfortunately, he's been in the hospital, it was a pretty serious issue, but I believe it's gotten passed to him, so he should be aware, and my understanding is regardless.
Hopefully that didn't put him in the hospital.
I think it was in that order, no? Obviously, I would like for him to do it, of course, because no matter what goes in there, my understanding is he'll be required to do so. If he can't, then, you know, if I, if that's something contingent that holds up the whole plan, of course, I'll do it, but I would ask for a timeline, because this is a new building, new business, there hasn't been any income yet, obviously.
Right, yeah, so, and you hit it right there, is that, you know, he, he has to understand that whatever change of use he wants to do in there, whether it's you or somebody else, you know, we're going to require a sidewalk up through there, similar to other properties in this area, so that's, that'd be, you know, further discussion. So that's, that would be, you know, further discussion moving forward here. But what we would, what we would require, you know, is to show a sidewalk on here for the length of the property. And then we can work out the details of timing and schedule and who would be responsible for that over, you know, the next meeting.
This becomes a really sort of minor point to that, but we required sidewalks through the driveways previously. I'm not necessarily for that. I think it's a bad detail for plowing and for other things. I think some little bit of relief, if the board's okay with it, would be to just do a painted crosswalk through the driveway. It's not quite as much sidewalk.
Are those islands curbed? Yes. Okay, so they gotta cut in the, make curb cuts anyway on the existing island as well.
Are you sure it's curved? Is it curved? I think there's a curb line on the front, I don't believe... Yeah, the island isn't though.
The radius is curved?
No, it's just a grass area. Yeah.
Hard to see with the snow.
I know. Did we require the property down the thing to go to the driveway, through the driveway?
Walgreens goes through the driveway.
Walgreens is more of a, that would be a different situation that we would require because of the amount of traffic that's going through there.
Yeah, I don't know about some of the other properties on Downer, I'd have to look.
Yeah, I'm more concerned with the smaller businesses there.
After my past life, I agree with Jim that you shouldn't run through the driveway. Because the sidewalk dictates the elevation from there on for eternity. And shouldn't do that.
So the sidewalks from Downer Street go through the driveways, that's the county's requirement?
Is it?
But what about that attorney's office that was, I think that's on our road and I don't...
I don't think he did. Did he?
He put in the sidewalk.
No, 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 not through the driveway. I don't think he did it through the driveway.
I don't remember.
Well, that's further discussion, we can, we can figure that out here.
So I have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I understand the D4 use, outdoor sales and displays. I'm not understanding the D6 use, which is light vehicle maintenance. Because these aren't vehicles. So what have we zoned outdoor power at over there on, what is it, Pottery?
That's in Camillus, I think, isn't it?
Is it Camillus?
That's in Camillus.
It is? We don't go that far? I mean, I'm concerned about the D6 designation because it calls out motor vehicle.
I think it's likely the closest.
Do you have anything?
Closest to the code. Well, I just think we need to make a... It says in D6, I'm sorry, don't interrupt.
No, go ahead.
It says in D6 that if there's any type of service, all that service is in the building. Any state of repair is in the building. But it calls out motor vehicle sales, use any building, land area, other premises, portions there of the display sales, including repair work done inside the building, kind of repairs. I just think that when we, when we spell out this, we need to exclude vehicles. If everybody uses D6 designation. Because it specifically, D6 is light vehicle maintenance and service.
So light vehicle wouldn't be a tractor?
Or an all-terrain vehicle.
An all-terrain vehicle.
Automobile. Yeah, I'm thinking automobile.
I agree with you, but I just, with the definition of...
There is no use for light, for small motor, motor repair, engine repair. There just isn't one in the code.
And I know, that's kind of what I was reading through this afternoon. I'm like, hmm, this is interesting, this is kind of a little gap unless we're gonna consider light vehicle maintenance, non-motor vehicle.
Can we do that? I don't know. You'd have to change them.
My buddy used to drive his truck around the 711.
Let's hope to avoid that.
So... You are the board that interprets your code.
That's nice.
That was a lawyer we interviewed.
Yeah, I know, right? We're also a board that wants to have a recovery.
It could be limited to a vehicle that doesn't require DMV registration.
Yeah, that's, right. I mean, maybe that's a condition that we can put on this.
Casey, you certainly don't have any intent to service vehicles there.
Of course, ATV.
No, I'm just, I'm just worried about if it's sold.
Right, that's right, that carries with it.
That goes with it. So it was kind of a little hiccup, so I just wanted to bring it up tonight to discuss a little bit because, I mean, light vehicle maintenance to me could be, you know, minor tune-ups. Heavy vehicle maintenance is tearing down engines, everything else is kind of how I look at it. But someone might look at light vehicle maintenance as ATVs and...
You could classify it by weight.
Yeah, you could. Yeah. But it's a little ambiguous, our code there, I discovered, because I was like, hmm, let's talk to the lawyer and then the lawyer sent it back to us, so here we are.
I hate to say it, but the right answer is probably...
Thank you.
The right answer is probably writing an amendment to the code and having the town board vote on it and amend it, where there's another use, D10, 11, whatever it is, that is for light engine repair, not motor vehicles. You could put a weight limit on it if you wanted. And then subsequent to that, we could just change the use.
Well, we can condition this one.
Yes, you could, I guess.
Condition, then move toward it.
What about this, you have D3, which is indoor sales or service. Indoor sales and service uses include all uses which conduct or display sales or retail merchandise or equipment, or which provide non-personal services. Non-professional services or banking services entirely within an enclosed building. Says that it includes...
Yeah, I looked at that, the laundry mat kind of threw me off when I looked at that one.
But it, but it just says indoor sales or service, it kind of just, it's a pretty broad and...
Pretty broad interpretation.
But it avoids the...
The motor vehicle call out, the D6.
Yes, but it's equipment, you're dealing with equipment, right?
What's a D4 designation?
Yeah, it's indoor sale.
Outdoor sales and displays.
Outdoor sales and displays. And this includes uses which sell, rent or display merchandise or equipment predominantly outside an enclosed building. It does say a use in which the outdoor display, for the, for the D3. The last sentence was in which, a use in which the outdoor display areas exceed 15% of the indoor sales shall be considered an outdoor sales use, so.
So we wouldn't even need that?
No.
I think you just go to write D3, get rid of D4 and D6 altogether.
Is that permitted in that district?
I have to read the law.
Yes, D3 is permitted in this, in like, local business.
It's an LB.
It's an LB.
Alright, so let's see, LB. D3 LB permitted. With site plan approval, because it's changed. So yeah, it's, it's good, under our table of planned uses.
You can even throw it on your map, send it, you'll be...
You know what, I'm bringing my wash.
While we're still kind of looking at this, we talked about whether or not this is gonna need a 239 review and we got into the minutia of 500 feet and we're at like 500.2.
That's, it's really close.
Well, it's 500. So it's to the property line, whatever, did you guys figure out what it is? You do know what it is?
We did it on Google Maps, we didn't take a tape measure out there.
So I guess, can we just refer it, just to be safe?
You can always refer it.
Yeah, I...
I mean, and here's for what it's worth, if it gets referred by the 24th, it makes the meeting on the 5th. So it will slow your process up, is my point. I would err on the side of caution frankly, because if you don't do it and they later make a determination for some reason that it should have, it's jurisdictionally defective.
Right, yeah, so I'm leaning towards referring it to 239.
Before it gets referred though, we gotta change the...
Correct. The application?
Yeah.
To a D3, D2, or what is it, D2 to D3?
D3.
D3.
Oh, yeah, D2 to D3.
No, it was D4, D5.
D4, D6, it was D6.
It was D4 and 6, we gotta change it to a D3.
What is it now? What is it now?
I think it's D2.
Well, that's what they have, so D4 and 6.
And then what are we going to?
D3.
D3, okay.
I thought I said that. Everybody shouting out there.
That was rough.
No, the building was already a D3 indoor sales, because it was a 3.4, then it was a curried coal. But you still, I think you still have to address D4 outdoor sales and display. Because it says in D3, a use in which the outdoor display area exceeds 15% of the indoor sales area shall be considered an outdoor sales use.
Are we exceeding the 15% though? I don't think we are.
He's put three pieces of equipment out there, he said.
But if he's not doing indoor sales, it's 100% increase.
He is doing indoor sales.
He is doing indoor sales.
Just doing, thought it was service.
No, he's doing indoor sales and that's, right?
Majority of the display will be indoors. I just want to have something outside that catches eyes, basically.
So you're telling me that the existing building is a D3?
That changes a lot.
It does.
What's a curb zoning? Could be up plus.
It doesn't, it's not.
What was the last thing, you were the thrift store, did you pull that applicant, applicant? Probably was?
So when it's still treated, because there's a change of...
I don't think it's gonna matter if we change if it's existing, we just have to update it directly.
Oh, it does, yeah. Because no longer is change of use.
That's right, that's where I'm going here.
All change of use. So it's a... Together we make up one coping solution here.
Yeah, see? It's all covered together in here.
But this is a bridge hour together. We might be dangerous.
So, so to clarify, I just confirmed with our code officer. The way New York State Building Code reads is it's a change of use or a change of occupancy requires the site plan. So it makes it easier to the extent that you're not changing the use, if the use was D3 and you're still a D3, but because of the change of occupancy, it still triggers the need for site plan. So we're okay doing this, referring it going forward. But just to clarify.
We should clarify before we, still, before we send this down to the county, we need to make sure that the application is correct. If it's going, if we're not doing a change of use, then we should have the application show that and that it's just a change of occupancy. Okay.
Does that mean for public hearing also?
No, it does not. It does not, you're still stuck with that.
I just thought it was change of use only, so it was major stuff.
There's a bunch.
Okay, so, so we'll refer this, let's just get clarification on what the existing is and what we're... I think we've all, all agreed that it's going to a D3 and that covers what the use of this property is gonna be. Okay, so Chair entertain a motion to set up a public hearing for Apex Motor Small Engine Repair, 7905 Kriegel Road, Tax Map ID number 034-03-07.1 for Tuesday, February 11th, 2025. End of motion.
Second.
Yeah, first and second, any comments? Hearing no comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Scheduled, so, go ahead.
Do we need to revise state plans showing the sidewalk before it goes to the county? They'll likely ask for it if you don't.
Sorry, could you have your engineer show the sidewalk? Doesn't have to cross the driveway, I've confirmed that we don't have to cross the driveway. So show a sidewalk within the public right of way for the entire length of the property except for the driveways? And then we could work out the details on it, like I said, on the timing and everything and who's gonna do it. So if you can get that to us, if you can get it to us by the end of the week, that'd be great. We just gotta be headed to the 24th.
That's correct, and I would still, for what it's worth, if for some reason, through the fault of yours, your design professional can't get it turned in on time, I would submit what we have to avoid missing deadlines.
100%.
Because we know, even if they come back and say it should have a sidewalk, the board already is aware of that.
We know that's gonna happen, okay.
Do you have something you need for the letter from the order, the same L C? And I had permission to change, so I'm not changing. No?
No, that's okay, permission to apply, whenever there's an applicant who's not...
You're a desk.
Yes, I would provide it to the closed office. Okay, we're good, we'll see you next month. If you have any other further questions, please reach out to the closed office. Casey, any other discussion that the board have on anything, have a flip? Just want you all to know that this is the record. Chair entertain a motion to close the zoning and planning board meeting for January 14th, 2025. Is that, Zero Turner, first and second, any comments? Hearing no comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Hurry up, go put...
Hear you.
Talking about cookies, can I do that?
Have a good evening, everyone.